I'd like to welcome you all to the October 5th, 2022 City Council meeting. We'll call officers by phone, Dee Cragan, Jason Upchurch, Heather Newsome, Caleb Staff, Naomi Diaz, Community Service Director Roger Krieger, City Clerk Treasury Debbie Cragan. So we're going to have our invocation tonight by Deacon Joe Nicholas. You have the floor, young man.
Okay. The meeting doesn't start until you hear amen. I saw that today. Heavenly Father, as we gather this evening, may you shower your blessings upon each of us and prepare everyone's hearts for the agenda items that will be discussed. Help our leaders be a blessing by how they speak and conduct themselves. Let everything discussed tonight align with your word, and may everyone speak with humility when presenting their ideas. And in your wisdom and mercy, guide and inspire our mayor, city council members, and other city officials who serve the people of Deer Park to conduct themselves with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. And finally, renew in each of us the strength of your presence and help us build a community worthy of those that we serve. And we ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and your love. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, an interior republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and liberty and justice.
Thank you, Deacon. Caleb Staff, item four, approval of agenda.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay.
I have a motion to amend the agenda. I'd like to add an item under new business letter C, making city council meetings accessible to all. I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion to second. Councilman Cragan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Caleb.
Yeah.
Caleb. Naomi. Motion to see. Motion passed. Now, let's go back and do the approval of the agenda amended. All in favor?
Motion to approve. Motion to approve is amended.
Okay. Thank you. Motion passed. So what was that, Caleb?
Just council meetings, making council meetings accessible to all.
All right. Item five, approval of September 7th, 2022 regular council meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Aye.
Item six, under new business, letter A, law enforcement survey. Lynn Cunningham, you have the floor, young lady.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Lynn Cunningham, and I have lived in the city of Deer Park for 25 years. I've come here wanting to clarify the law enforcement survey many citizens received in the mail. So my first question, which is to all of you, does the council have to approve any correspondence sent to the voters of Deer Park?
That's a question for the council.
So any, I would like all of you to answer it if you would.
Restate the question, please, ma'am.
Sure. Does the council have to approve any correspondence sent to the voters of Deer Park?
I guess I don't know the legal answer to that. Just off the top of my head. Is your question, why did we send out the survey?
No.
I mean...
Do you approve, does it have the approval of any correspondence that's sent out? Not just the law enforcement survey, but any survey that you would put out or any correspondence?
I don't believe, I don't believe we've ever been asked to approve a specific piece of mail that was sent to anyone. Dee might remember doing that, she's been our longest-serving member, but I don't remember ever approving any of the sent surveys.
Well, I would love it if she would answer, because since she...
She here?
I have to concur with that. I don't remember ever having to approve anything.
Okay. I agree. Thank you.
Did every member of the city council approve this survey?
No. There was no formal action to approve or disprove.
So...
Yeah.
Which city of Deer Park meeting minutes included the action to authorize this survey?
So, so if I...
Go ahead.
So the survey was put out by a committee. The committee was authorized by the council earlier this year, February, I believe, February in the special council. Yeah, task force. The funding for the committee was approved last October, I guess approved last October. So, yeah, so the funding was approved.
So there is a task force for a survey?
A committee.
Yeah.
A committee.
Not for a survey, but there's a police committee that meets and to investigate whether we want to move from our current model of contracting with the sheriff's office to a local police department.
Okay.
So that's the goal of the...
So maybe you, are you on this task force?
Yes.
Okay. How were the six questions decided upon?
Through the whole task force. Yeah. We came up with them.
And how did the council ensure it was surveying a representative sample of residents?
Yeah, it's a good question. So we actually went out of our way to try to canvass much of, as much of Deer Park as we could, shy of just putting it on a ballot for a vote. So in the past, when we've put out surveys, they go through the water bill. And the problem with the water bill is that there are a lot of residents of the city who don't get a water bill. So anybody who rents, they don't get a water bill by law. And there are a lot of people who get the water bill who aren't residents of the city, landlords, or landlords. So we actually, we partnered with Deer Park Printing, yeah, Deer Park Printing, that they would, that they would, as best possible, try to get at least one survey to every household. I'm aware that that didn't quite happen, but we tried to get it as wide as possible.
No, it did not. And, you know, my husband and I, I mean, we have different points of view on this, and we received one. And we had, there was no preface to it. It just kind of landed on mailbox, and he tried to answer, I tried to answer, and we were very confused. And there was no due date for it, and it was just very confusing. So that's why I have a deep concern, because it doesn't seem very transparent. It seems very, you know, out of the blue. And did the council have any data showing an increase in crime in the city? Is that why we got the survey? Is there a, is there any data that we should be aware of?
No, the survey was specifically so that the police committee could hear from the citizens on their perception of policing, crime, costs, what concerns that they have, that sort of thing. So that was, it was, we are to make a recommendation of, you know, what way to go.
Well, this, this was a little troubling. This is one of the questions that we were very concerned about. Do you feel like Deer Park is more safe or less safe than five years ago? So feeling, that can be very construed. I mean, I feel safe, someone else may not. I mean, it's just like, it's not really a feeling. It should be data-driven, not a feeling, I believe.
Sure. And we have data.
Could I have access to that data?
Can't you have it? What's that?
You have it. Share with it.
Well, I don't have it in front of me. And you've restricted who is allowed to see the access to that data in the past, so I'm not, I don't feel as though I'm at liberty.
We can open it up.
You're at liberty as a voter. I mean, I believe in transparencies.
I'm with you as well. The mayor in the past has restricted who gets that information, so I don't want to offer that if that's not mine to offer, so.
I can give you a, we have a monthly sheriff's report, and I can give you a copy of that. I have one at my desk right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's great.
And that is open to the, to the council members.
And what is the cost to us, the taxpayer, in consulting fees, preparing and printing the survey, your task force, there are fees, any other costs in preparing this survey? The cost to us, the taxpayers?
I believe we're going to approve tonight that it was $987, $987 to send out the survey. Yeah, so...
Well, we're not talking about just the survey.
Yeah, I...
But your time, the task force...
The task force hasn't, the only cost I'm aware of so far is $987. We, the council last year...
$1,000.
Yeah, so the council last year approved $100,000 for a police consultant.
Consultant.
Consultant. So up to that amount. So we're under 1% of what the council last year approved.
What's the cost of the consultant again?
We haven't, we haven't contacted a consultant at this point.
Are you going to?
We're not sure.
Okay. Does Deer Park catalog all documents with a document control system?
That would be, I guess, a question for Debbie.
What do you mean? Well, all, traditionally, all documents that are prepared by the city council are, have a document control number. But we don't have control numbers. So will this survey be published and printed with an official Deer Park document number? No, we don't do document numbers. Never have. Okay. Well, does the Deer Park contract with Municipal Resource and Service Center? No, we don't. We just part, we can get our questions answered to MRSC. There's a, there are a group of attorneys that are available to us, should we need to use them. Yeah, they're a nonprofit, and they... Correct. They contract with them. Well, they do enhance... Okay, but we don't contract with them. We have no contract with them. I'm wondering if that would be a better use of money than consultants and task forces and surveys, but, yeah. So when are you going to publish the results of the, well, that would be the data, right? That would be part of the data? And when is this survey?
We nailed down 1,881 of them, Lynn, and so far, we've got 387 back. They're still coming back in. The surveys are going back to the office.
Well, can I be notified when there's a final collection date?
I will let you know.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Perhaps in the, maybe on the letter, at some point in the discussion, we offered that people who wanted multiple copies, like per household, to drop one in a city hall. So that was, that was part of the news at some point. I don't know if that was at just a city council meeting or what, but there was definitely the option if someone wanted to follow up and have two per household, or as many as adults as there were.
Well, it would be nice to have like a preface on it, so explains, you know, why this is coming to your home, with the due date, and just, just make it a little more transparent and understandable in the future. That's, that would be my suggestion as a voter. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. So next up, item D under new business, is notice of ward radiation lagoon replacement, Home Construction Incorporated, in the amount of $5,618,638 in three sets. Roger.
So this is a project that most of you have been aware of for, we've been working on for two or three years now. We're finding that the stage where we have all of the colleges blessing, the Division of Dam Safety, permitting folks to proceed with the project, which is basically the replacement of the existing service, or existing wastewater lagoon that had a 15-year design life built in 1985, with a new lagoon that's about 10 gallons bigger, has a dual liner system, it should have a life of 35 or 40 years easily, well outside the length of the loan that we have to pay this off. Interestingly enough, in the payables, you'll see one of the last payments to Arcadia, which is the last payment of the old lagoon built in 1985. We're finally making that this, but, so anyway, the bids came in, there was, there was about 11 bidders at a pre-bid meeting. It wasn't a mandatory meeting, but there's about 11 there. Some of them were subs, but some of them were generals and so forth. And out of that, four of them came back, fit within the range of what we hope to see the bids at, even as the way the rates are right now on costs and so forth, so we're pretty happy with that. So now we're at the stage of needing your approval to get this project going. You know, so notice of award documents in here, should you approve it tonight, the mayor will sign it, and Home Construction, who is the low bidder, who would recommend your award, is already contacted the Vista, doing their work, because they want to get going this fall to take advantage of the lower groundwater table and some of the fill before winter comes. So hopefully, if there's any questions, I can answer those, but we need your motion to approve.
I make the motion to approve the notice of award with Home Construction, in the amount of $5,618,638. $638.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second. Any questions by the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion through. Item C, Caleb?
Yes, I appreciate it, Ms. Mayor. And thank you to the rest of the council members for allowing us to add this to our agenda for tonight. I requested this a month ago, but didn't quite make it clear, so it's better to put it on the agenda this evening. A month ago, we had that discussion about our ADA policy. We passed a resolution in support of that, and then at the same meeting, we had a citizen stand up and ask for some help in making sure that she could hear and understand our conversations, and the conversations as part of the meeting. And so, as we considered that, as I considered that, someone else after the meeting pointed out that something that we'd considered a year or two ago and hadn't taken action on could actually hold the answer, both to her concern and improve the accessibility of these meetings to a whole lot of people. So I would suggest that in response to that concern, that we go ahead and take the steps necessary to equip city council members with laptops, with the necessary software, acquire Zoom license, and add whatever we need to, to this room, as far as webcam or other cameras, bringing back our microphones and patching those into the system as well, so that we can make sure that not only the people here can act, can hear well those discussions, but people actually throughout our city, community, and throughout the world, if somebody wants to tune in from elsewhere. The primary reason that a software like Zoom would be a really helpful answer, both for the people with hearing difficulties and with people throughout our community, is that when we have those technologies in place, we have the ability to have instantaneous transcription software at work for us, just as part of the natural process. So we can display actually our council meeting right here on the screen and have a text being live broadcast at the bottom, so that anybody here with hearing difficulties would be able to look at the screen and stay in touch with what we're all saying and talking about. But then, of course, people who can't make it out to the meeting, perhaps they're at home with children in bed. I know my wife would sometimes enjoy being able to participate from distance. I'm sure other people would as well. Those technologies would broaden the reach of what we can do. This particular solution would also allow folks who prefer just to join by phone to continue doing that. Zoom allows the option for someone to dial in and listen and participate. It would also allow us to have a city employee or someone part of managing that component of the meeting, so that should there be dogs barking in the background or televisions playing from people's homes, we can have someone with the ability to mute those lines until there's a need for those people to speak up and raise their hand and be heard so that they can comment as well. So I would bring a motion. Oh, yes, we can.
Can I add you?
Oh, yes, go for it.
Okay, so the following Tuesday from the council meeting, we met with Huppens, because Huppens originally did this system in here in 2017 for $10,000. So we contacted them, and I shared your email with them, so they knew exactly what we were looking for. And they are getting us a quote back, and we're working with Vision, which does our software, and they're looking at Microsoft Teams. It's a, so it's a license that they're going to add to us.
Right.
Okay, so with all that's in place, I'm just waiting for the quotes back from them.
Okay, that's great. I'm excited.
And ADA compliance and everything.
Perfect.
Okay.
As part of that, are we going to be able to move to devices that would be capable for the city council members to have public records on that could be then turned in and should a public record...
I believe so. That's why I'm going with Vision, because they handle all our background stuff.
Great, thank you. I was hoping to kill multiple birds with one step.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
That's where we're at with that.
Do you need any authorization from us, or do we...
Well, I'm waiting for the Huppens to give back.
Okay.
So hopefully, along with that, we'll have, I mean, your budget time is coming forth, and we asked, Huppens at least, we've made them aware of the budget timing and so forth, but hopefully, they can come up with what the hard costs are. Vision will have some of their costs relative to the licensing and things like that. You'll still have a personal, or not personal policy, but a computer policy that I know that...
Yeah, that's in Kate's guide.
Yeah, so the attorneys work on that, that you'll have to pass, and I would suggest you, you really go through that and adopt that before you spend any money on the capital side. But anyway, those things, there's three different things coming forth. I'm not going to tell you, they're going to be timed right for the budget process, but it may be something you have to add to the, you know, spend later, but anyway.
Do we need to make a motion to approve the lawyer to write up a policy?
They're already working on that.
They're already working on it.
Okay.
You have to do that, you have to have that in place with all the public records and all the things that potentially tie to how the information has to be tracked and monitored and stored, and, you know, the strings that you'll have around that device in your house.
Yeah.
So does that answer your question?
It does. And Teams, they're equivalent as far as the possibilities, so that's great, whatever solution.
And we're looking, just, you know, as one of the guys here, probably the potential to have an owl camera up here, which seemed to be the way most are going versus cameras around the room and everything else like that. Because the intent of the owl camera is to be able to see you all at your meeting, you know, to broadcast that out, and so.
I would, if there's a way to, I mean, because we so often have citizen comment throughout, I think it would be valuable to make sure that we can see and hear them as well.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the range is, what they'll, they'll hear it. I'm not sure the camera, when somebody's sitting in the back of the room, is, the owl will zoom to that, you know?
Oh, sure.
But you'll hear the volume, so.
Okay.
But anyway, that's, that's ongoing.
Thank you.
So we will table, in that table, we'll...
Yeah, we'll receive the motion. Yeah, that's great. Thanks for letting us have a discussion about it.
Next up, item seven, ordinances, second reading, public input. Letter A, ordinance 2022-0, I'm sorry, 1008 zoning map amendment, changing classification from R2A to R3A, Niggestal Homes, LHSB. Roger, can you give us just a little bit on that before I ask people?
Yeah, I was looking in this, and unfortunately, the map, well, if you brought your packet from last time, it had lots of stuff in there, and it had the map and so forth. But it's, it's a parcel that sits on the southwest corner of H and South Caldo. It's a parcel of land being requested to be changed from its current classification of R2A to R3A, allowing lot sizes of a potential of 6,000 square feet, similar to what the lots are in Habitat, what the lots are on the north side of H. Everything around that's pretty much that same zoning classification, except this old church parcel. And so the request is to modify that so they can further develop for residents to develop. It's went through the planning commission, herein, it went to CD Ted, which is a 60-day review time. It's, it's been out there for a while, it's back here now for your second reading. This is a public input, if there is any, and then it'll go to a third reading later for action.
So any citizen have a question on that? Yes, ma'am.
What would the major differences between those two zonings be?
R2A is a 10,000 square foot lot minimum size, R3A is a 6,000 square foot lot minimum size. That's the basic difference.
Anybody else? Moving on.
So this was requested by the owners of that property?
Yes.
Okay, and so it's going to, I just want to make sure I heard it correct, it's 3A would be smaller lots, or 2A is bigger lots?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. No other questions?
Moving on to the third reading. Next up, number eight, resolutions, we have none. Number nine, instead agenda, letter A, approval of vouch claim check numbers 4561 through 4607, in the amount of $871,444.51 for the first half of September 2022. Item B, approval of vouch reclaiming check numbers 4608 through 4634, including EFD debits in the amount of $438,551.58 for the second half of September 2022. Item C, approval of payroll checks number 14794 through 14827, including PML, 941 taxes and health benefits, in the amount of $137,830.38 for the month of September 2022.
I make a motion to approve. We can send it in.
We have a motion to second. Any comments or questions by the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion through. Item 10, council questions, comments, or reports. Dee, we'll start with you.
I have nothing.
Jason?
Yes, sir.
Caleb?
I have a couple of questions. One, one of the architects that had submitted our architect fee in response to our city hall question, sent me an email today, just asking about some other architect fees that we had recently put out. And they were wondering if any of those proposals needed a response from, like, landscape design, architecture, anything?
No, the one that went out is for the engineering services. We have a, the current term, a five-year term ends the end of this year.
Oh, for JPE?
Yeah, so we have to go out and, the federal funding agencies of FAA and Federal Highways and EPA through BOE and DHO, and all those people, they sometimes struggle with our process of a five-year cycle, but we have their approval to go through the selection process for that. So we're basically going through another RFP process for engineering.
Okay. Well, she was just highlighting that, should we, redesigning the park or putting a splash pad, things like that, they would love to be contacted. It was Architects West.
Yeah, and best for them, I mean, they just need to team up with any of the proposers that they put in, because we do list that. I mean, it's a small portion of it, but it is a potential in there to have some park needs. We had, the last time we went through this Swinney Park, the splash pad and all those kinds of things were at the forefront, and so we had all those kinds of things in on the RFP for consultant help.
Okay, that's what they must have been seeing.
Yeah.
That's great. And that would be one, just from their follow-up, trying to understand and improve their own systems for their RFPs. I was really impressed with their team, more so from the follow-up than their proposal. As far as an update from the city hall task force, we had our kickoff meeting yesterday with MMEC architects, and we had... with MMEC architects and we had, besides several of our original task force members, we also had Gary from the Scope Office, Rose from the Senior Center, and Josh from the Chamber of Commerce. So those are the three main residents or tenants of the lower level of the building. They judged us for that. And the next steps from this point are, MMEC will be scheduling conversations with those folks and with department heads from the city, with the mayor, they'll be going through, Roger, to get those things on schedule. They have, this was their preliminary questionnaire that they had here, it's three pages that they're going to be using to help evaluate our current usage of this building and possible future usage. And I was just really, I'm excited for our staff. I think this is a really good chance for them to tell us what we can do to make their jobs easier and make a better impression and service for the public. And I would encourage members of the public, one of the things that we'd be looking for feedback on, and I presume I'm the best person else to communicate this, but your impression of how these city council meetings work. Because as we look at options for this building, we would, we have the opportunity to redesign this room a little bit or design something different. And so if there were ways that could make this more accessible, easier to join in the conversation, things like that, I think we should consider those. Again, I'd be happy to collect that feedback and pass that on. I will modify those comments, I'll just kind of record them, pass them on to architects and they can put that in with their overall evaluation. But I'm excited for the city staff to help us understand what people are coming into the building for, how we might better serve them, and to take the opportunity to tell us what, tell us as the council, what the staff needs to better improve filing systems and meeting spaces and workspaces, all those sorts of things. So excited for that. We did have two folks resign from that task force, Kim Farrell and Mary Volpe. Their work schedules differed earlier in the year. The other thing that we'd love feedback from citizens would be, as you come into city hall to do business, pull a permit, pay a water bill, whatever it is, be sure to just kind of notice the bill and how it might be better if it's different. So excited for that. As far as how task forces work, at least this one, those are all volunteers from the community. The MMEC architects are consultants that we set aside money for last year and we are paying them to do this work, to understand our building layout and help us understand our needs so that we can do as well as the folks did 100 years ago when they built this building and made it usable 100 years in the future. We want to make sure we go ahead. Is that coming?
Yummy. I have some good news and Brad's going to share. Country Club Park, the playground equipment finally came after a year order. Brad?
It's all assembled. We are going for concrete tomorrow, the concrete in the legs. We have the fall material, it's basically wood chips that are treated. We're going to get, I'm hoping it'll be done and usable. Other than, if we got too late in the year, we won't have the concrete mortar around it, but the chips will be right out to the grass. So I'm hoping by the end of next week, it'll be, other than the concrete mortar which we'll put in in the spring, it'll be totally done and usable.
Sorry, which park was that?
Country Club Park, towards the golf course.
Thank you.
If you're going north, it's on the left-hand side, the bathrooms are right there close to the road, there's a basketball court, now there's some playground equipment for the young kids.
Did we get that same thing for the?
No.
Hold on.
No.
Okay.
Yeah. So we ordered two sets. Well, let me take that back. We ordered a set, the day after I ordered the set, the guy quit and shredded the order. So he contacted, the lady that took us over and figured this out contacted us, so we went ahead and ordered two sets. Well, between her and the people that make the set, because they, they're just the salespeople, they only made one set. So I ordered another set yesterday, but this set is coming from, those people were in Alabama, yeah, Alabama. These people are actually in Squim, right here in Washington. So I ordered another set, but we're still, it'll be March, April before we get it, which is fine, we wouldn't have time this year to get them installed. So it's not exactly the same set, but it's relatively close.
Where does the second set go?
The algorithm on 6th.
Oh, good. Oh, great.
We have a big open spot right in the middle where there's nothing there, so that's where we're going to put it. And they're big sets, the whole Joe Dove was 47 feet long and 35 feet wide, so, and you have to have fall protection around it, but they're big set, it's a big set.
Yeah, that's great. That's great.
Good?
Yes, sir.
That's exciting to hear.
Yeah.
Okay. Next up, item 11, interested citizens or communications, requests and comments from the audience on unrelated agenda items. Scott, we'll start with you.
I wanted to thank you and the Spokane County Sheriff's Department for helping out in the park area, the Swinier Park, to make it a little bit safer for the people who live around Swinier Park and the people who use Swinier Park. And also I wanted to thank the Scope volunteers and Jim who drive around in the city to help make it a safer city for all the people that live here. I just wanted to do that. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I really think the playground equipment is a wonderful idea and a wonderful gesture and it's true crime prevention. When you do stuff like that, that's, you have my full approval. I believe that does more to prevent crime than anything. You have stuff for children to do and families to do. Thank you.
Danica?
Hi. Two things, do you have a set date for when you will be reviewing the budget for the upcoming year?
We were thinking of next week.
So not during a city council meeting, is that correct?
You know, what we first do is have a workshop. You're welcome to come to it, but the public does not put any input into it.
No, that's fine. I'm just wondering when you'll be addressing the budget with the public.
Usually, once it's approved.
Yeah, maybe go back into, first thing in November.
Yeah, November and adoption, first one is December typically.
So we're trying to, I will try to set up a workshop so we can get started on it.
Okay, thank you. Second one, the law enforcement survey, it raises the question of, does our current contract with the sheriff's office not effectively enforce the items listed, traffic, that homelessness? Is that a reason why the survey was set out in part? Do you feel that our current contract does not effectively enforce that?
Is that just for?
It is an opinion from anyone on the council.
Again, a lot of the questions were public perception. So when I talk to people, I hear different things that are sometimes related in reality within your question about the actual data. Sometimes people have a very uninformed view of what's going on.
Yes.
And so sometimes actually what we should do as a city, rather than hire more police officers necessarily, is actually just educate our population. So, which is relatively cheap. So some of that is, is there a huge contrast between, say, an issue with reckless endangerment driving or rape or something like that and the public's perception of it? And if it's like, oh, well, if you look at, I don't know if the statistics are in front of you, but if there's been no rape for a year and a half, then maybe we should like, hey, thank you county sheriffs for, you know, or whatever. So some of it is a perception thing. What is the public perceiving? So, so some of it is just, it is, we're not trying to play tricks or games or any, we really are trying to understand the public's perception. To your, to your thing, I think it would have been helpful to have a cover letter of, here's what it is, here's why, and let me just throw one other.
And a due date.
And a due date would have been super helpful. And just one other thing, because somebody had called us out on it, is that homelessness, as far as I'm aware, is not a crime. And that's, that's one of the things listed there.
People without a home, yeah.
Right. So crime related to homelessness may, or something with that may have been more helpful, that sort of thing. So there were definitely things that we could have done that would have been more effective. So, and I can't speak for the rest of the committee, but I apologize for that.
I think it raises good questions and good commentary. Something I'd like to bring to the task force is, consider how we can make our current contract work for us versus adding on new officers. And also Scope, how are they being utilized? I know, I'm a long forest and every day while I'm taking my daughter out to get the mail to across the street, multiple people blow through that four-way intersection there at D and Forest. That is ridiculous. I haven't seen a single officer up there. School's in session, there's construction, there's rerouting traffic, absolutely no police presence and yet we have someone contracted to our area, never seen them. Scope, they don't come out that way. I've called Scope, I've called Crime Check, I've been told Deer Park does not fall within their jurisdiction. Homelessness, homelessness is not a crime, but there's a man camping in the field across from the library. He's been living in their parking lot for over three months now. Whether that's up to them to trespass him, someone's, there's no bathrooms like open in Deer Park at night. You are defecating and urinating in that field. I can't let my daughter go into that field now. I, it raises the question of, why are we allowing homelessness versus trying to provide resources? That is what I do for a living. There are no resources in Deer Park. It would be beneficial to look into either providing resources or maybe approaching that person, but instead we're just letting someone set up a tent and camp in a field. Doesn't look very good. I'm half tempted to let someone build stinking apartments across from me, I don't want that, but if it's going to keep people from just camping out. So I mean, those are my concerns and those are concerns I expressed on the survey. So I hope you take the public's comment to heart because I've tried to reach out to our law enforcement supposedly here in town and I get no help. Thank you.
The, Danica, if I, the field is at the old hospital field, it's right there?
Yeah.
And he's living there currently?
Either in a tent or in a truck.
I've seen him in a car.
It's whenever, there's multiple people that come and go, but there's one person specifically and it's whenever my neighbor and I feel the need to walk over in there and say, hey, you can't be camping up here. If you need help, there's help to be had. I'm willing to help get that person resources outside of my field of work, outside of company I work for. Some people just don't want help, but we shouldn't be allowing that. That doesn't look good for our town. Traffic is my biggest concern, frankly. I do not see any police presence here. Any that you want to bring in more? I see that as money being wasted for them to go set up Obmark all day.
Thank you. Richie, you're next up.
Okay, I have a short list. Okay, so I just wanted to make a clarification. Previously I had seen it with the sheriff's data that a lot of the information that was redacted or confidential because there was ongoing investigations and confidential information in that and that's why it's not just like published on the city website. Is that right?
It's confidential.
Well, actually, there's a resource when we did...
On Spokane County, on their website.
Yeah, on their website, there's a comprehensive list of breakdown by crimes and times.
Right, it's not as, not as detailed as the monthly report that the sheriff gives though.
I compared them side by side.
Yeah.
The report is confidential.
The also, the sheriff, Ozzy Kinovich, one time when he was here, he was telling us that he doesn't get data from Crime Check, doesn't get a lot of information from that. Is that still a communication problem, getting data from Crime Check into maybe the reports that the sheriff is providing? Are you having trouble getting any of that data?
I mean, I'm not the sheriff, so that's...
Yeah, I know, I just...
I will say, it was outside of the city, but I reported a break-in and I got a call from Officer, Deputy, excuse me, Ennis 30 minutes later and she was on scene and took evidence, pictures, report, whole deal. I mean, it was wonderful, but it was through Crime Check, so.
Okay.
Presumably they have some sort of relationship.
Yeah. So for both you and Caleb, can more people join the task force and how would they go about getting involved in those task forces that you guys have, are working on?
I believe more, more can, it's open. I think, I would think our task force only has maybe two more meetings and we're probably winding down and then we'll submit those findings to the council.
Okay.
Ours has multiple more meetings, at least a year's worth of work ahead of us, could possibly be three to five years' worth of work. So that would be a great one if somebody is interested in helping us think through the options we have with this building and how to make it work for us for another 100 years, that would be great. We, our process for that is to contact me, let me know, we'll talk to Mayor Tim. In the past, we've approved those folks to the task force through a city council meeting. Our next meeting officially with MMEC and some of the other folks involved isn't until November 9th. So if somebody wants to join us before then, there should be plenty of time for that to happen. Be happy to bring them up to speed.
And they don't have to commit for three to five years?
No. I mean, somebody resigned this week, so. They were retired, they're less retired now, so.
Okay. On another subject, one of my kids has auditory processing disorder. His ears work fine, he can hear everything normally. The problem is that between the ear and the brain, the nerves get the signals all mixed up. And for him, it is extremely helpful to have transcription. I'm going to be teaching all my kids civics, we got the books, I'm excited to teach them that, want to get them more involved with the meetings here. And for him to be able to participate, it would be very good to be able to have that live transcription that he has had access to in Teams and Zoom and Google meetings and all the, all the things that work with that. So thank you for working towards that and getting that done. It still kind of amazes me that we're just now getting to that though, but thank you for getting that done. Another concern, oh, related to that, the owl systems, I'm a bit familiar with those, those have 360-degree cameras on it. The microphones on those pick up a lot of background noise, so it's very beneficial to have dedicated microphones for key individuals and then a microphone that you can turn on or off for people who are coming up to speak. Just a recommendation on that. Another subject, when Comcast came into Deer Park, they took over all of the cable, they put in a lot of new fiber and stuff, but they left a lot of old cables hanging, dangling from the power poles. Some of it is just coiled up on the ground with the cable hanging from the pole. I always expected them to come back and clean it up, but I've noticed it all around town. Is there anything that can be done to get Comcast to come clean up that mess?
That's a good question. Roger, yeah? Well, there's probably something in the franchise agreement that talks about, maybe not that specific thing, but somewhere close to that.
There's a hole right next to my house that, I mean, a kid could come and grab it.
I don't know if it's, well, it could be CenturyLink stuff too, but it's hard to say, but.
Good luck with CenturyLink.
Well, it all started getting cut and dangling down when Comcast was doing all the upgrades, so.
I don't, I don't know, but I'm sorry, look.
That's all of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Richie. Brad, it?
I think one of these topics I might even bring before the agenda, but I've lived here for 10 years, I think I've attended 30 meetings and only one of them has been really worth my time. It was that special meeting discussing Swinier Park and we had, you know, excuse, Council Member Deez wasn't there, her predecessor was here. But everybody involved really had something good to offer, even Council Member Newsom was incredibly shy. She had some good things to happen. And everybody agreed, oh, we need to invest in our community, we need to invest in Deer Park. You had that one meeting, that was seven months ago, and that was such a perfect opportunity to bring the whole community together, I mean, everybody, not just the regulars, I'm talking about young kids with the skate park, which most of us have no clue what that is about. You had a chance to bring young people who are non-white and a portion of this community that in general probably doesn't feel comfortable being... that in general probably doesn't feel comfortable being in this community. So I'm just curious, what happened to that? Because I got to tell you, it's kind of embarrassing that here I am in Deer Park, Washington, and the second most populous county, we can't attract a second grocery store. Our creative people flee and never return. Seems like everything around here gets done and secrets are behind, behind the door somewhere. But the one thing we can't attract that really has bugged me for a long time is a funeral for a white supremacist, anti-Semite, kidnapper, racist, serial killer, who killed at least seven to 20 people. I would rather attract creative people, people that are making a difference in the world than that. And then another thing, so I would love for Swinier Park to be brought on the agenda at some point, people have concerns. We got to start investing in this community, it's getting kind of ridiculous. And a second thing is, just a comment, nothing today triggered this, but we did just pass an anniversary. As far as homeless goes, I know that's on the topic of a lot, it's on the mind of a lot of people. I just want people in Deer Park to understand, something that has been brought up to me, because I don't live in the Deer Park bubble, I talk to other people, I talk to other leaders, there's something that got brought up to me last Christmas that has also kind of really bugged me for a while. So just remember, when we talk about homeless, let's try to keep the facts, let's try to calm things down. Because just over a year ago, we had some youth from Deer Park who went to Spokane, hunted down a black woman, and beat her brains in with a baseball bat. Now that's been dealt with, but I just ask public figures, let's just tone, nothing today was said was bad, at all, but I'm just saying in general, and in the future, let's really tone down the comments towards homelessness. There's a lot of issues that none of you understand, it's a very deep issue, and it's very complicated. And I would appreciate it as leaders everywhere, you're seeing it on ads, everybody's trying to demonize these people, and it's ridiculous. Let's stop that here in Deer Park, because it really doesn't make your community look good. That's all. But again, I'd really like Swinier Park to be discussed. I think that would be a good way to bring community together. And I'm kind of curious, what, why did we stop those meetings? That was, that was a fantastic meeting, and it could have done a lot of good.
It could be a task force.
Well, I want it for everybody, I want everybody in here. Let's fill this room. I'm more worried, I would be more worried about reinvesting in your parks than reinvest, reinvesting in a, in a building. If that's going to take five years, you can do this park issue in two, and it's going to boost your morale as a community. Because I'm telling you, as I see all these, like, these wonderful markets that you have this, this spring, with the vendors, I bet none of those people live in Deer Park. So when they come to Deer Park, what do they see? Well, they see a downtown that's rundown, and they're going to see a place where it's very clear to anybody that's already paying attention, you have nothing for your kids to do, you don't, you don't seem like a community that has a lot of pride, excuse the pun. So that's, I really want to encourage, especially going into next year, let's get Swinier Park and let's really invest in our community in like, what y'all said we were going to do. Instead of, you know, at the last meeting and saying, well, I'm really, I've had it with what's going on with Swinier Park, I thought that was kind of a slap in the face. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Brandon.
Okay, next up, item 12, Executive Session.
Tim? Before you go, you got to set a budget workshop, and you got some stuff to send out. Pass out, don't forget, two of those spiders.
Find your calendars.
What's that?
How about Tuesday, the 13th, about 12:00 in the workshop? Yeah?
But why on Thursday?
Six.
What?
Seven.
Six.
I can't.
You can do it later.
Seven.
I just want to feed my kids.
Seven would be behind the breath of.
Six thirty.
I would prefer seven.
We've got young kids, that's our, that's, that's my one chance to see them that day, it's dinner time.
Okay, what about Tuesday nights? Tuesday night? What can you do?
Wednesday night?
I think I'm open that Thursday. Yeah, Thursday night at seven or the Wednesday.
I'm like, I'm open tonight, it just has to be later, it's fighting for my children and see them. More than like a, hi, here's my purse, I'll be over again.
So Wednesday at seven?
Yeah.
The 12, 7 o'clock? Yes, no?
Sure.
Budget workshop.
We'll, we're just, we have one workshop.
So you tell them all we get done in that one.
So we're going to focus.
So the 12, the 7?
Yes, sir.
Brad, is that work due, too?
Sure. It's not Friday night.
Friday, Maggie, it's.
Football. Those black miners.
Well, no, at 7:00 it's football.
Okay, fair.
No Friday night.
Fair.
This is the budget revenue. Yeah, so just the revenues, proposed, the potential Ed Warham tax numbers, the actual expense will be at that, passed out then.
All right, so we're going to go to the Executive Session pursuant to RSTW 42.30.110. One D to discuss potential real estate stuff. 30 minutes.
Tim? I just want to announce to everybody that 8:30 next Tuesday morning, we're doing an airport tour with the airport board. Anybody that's interested, you're welcome to attend, we're meeting at the admin building, and we'll start from there.
When was that?
Uh, next Tuesday morning at 8:30.
Okay. We also get a ride in an airplane, right?
Why not?
We get to drive one?
All right, so we're going to break, break for 30 minutes. Next item up is 13 in German.